Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 11, 2020. We will first... We will rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation, which will be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight will be led by Commissioner Holtz. So if you'd please rise and we'll do this. Thank you.
Please stand, face the flag, put your hand over your heart, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Anderson, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz?
Here.
Commissioner Hing?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner...or Chairman Redholtz?
Here. Next item is approval of minutes for our regular meeting of January 28, 2020. Commissioners have any changes to the minutes?
None.
Seeing none, those minutes are approved as presented. Next item is oral communications. This is the time when any member of the public can address the commission on topics that fall within the purview of the commission. You can speak to us on non-agenda items. I don't have any cards in front of me for oral communication. Does anyone wish to speak to the commission on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we will close oral communications and move into the agenda itself. We have one public hearing tonight and two non-hearing items. The first is a public hearing. Item number two, which is an administrative use permit, number 19-37, categorically exempt. The applicant is Bergerime, right? Yes. And that location is 301 South Glendora Avenue, number 28. The request is...the applicant is requesting approval of an administrative use permit to provide on-sale service of beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide restaurant. This is a type 41 ABC license. Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting the report, please?
Our planning intern, Eileen Santos, will be presenting that report.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, so good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting administrative use permit 19-37. The applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to allow for on-sale of beer and wine at a restaurant located at 301 South Glendora Avenue. So the restaurant's name is Bergerime, and it's zoned as general urban zone in a 2,000-square-foot tenant space. For reference, this is located on the corner of Lake Strobe and South Glendora Avenue. It's in the same area as the Colony, as the Colony at the Lakes. So the applicant is requesting an administrative use permit for a type 41 liquor license, which allows for the on-sale service of beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide Here's a copy of the site plan. Bergerime's business hours is Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Friday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. During their operating hours, the restaurant will serve alcoholic beverages at the order This is the project's public notice, which was mailed to 595 owners and applicants within 300 feet. Planning staff received an email from Kit King Way, a resident from the Colony, requesting a public hearing. She was concerned with potential traffic congestion, air pollution, and noise. Furthermore, Kit King Way is concerned with patrons of the restaurant drinking irresponsibly and creating a nuisance. And based on their request, this administrative use permit has been forwarded to the Planning Commission. There is no evidence that any detrimental effects, such as noise, litter, traffic congestion, or other nuisances, would occur due to the proposed on-sale of beer and wine with conjunction with operations of Bergerime. There are several other casual restaurants that include alcohol on their menus within the vicinity. The police department did not have any concerns regarding the operation of the business or the proposed on-sale of beer and wine. Furthermore, the Colony was designed as a mixed-use building with commercial uses on the first floor and residential uses on the upper floors. As a restaurant, the on-sale of beer and wine is expected to enhance the dining experience by offering a variety of beer and wine for its customers. It would also help the success of Bergerime because it would provide the restaurant an equal opportunity, given that most restaurants in the vicinity provide on-sale alcoholic So the staff...planning staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit 19-37. That's the end of my presentation, and if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Very good. Thank you very much. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for staff? No questions. Excellent. Oh, we have a question? Okay.
I guess my only question is that with the one residence that was asking the questions, how far is she away from this particular location of the restaurant? I know that area is pretty...
Well, that's a little hard for us to tell. She lives in the building, but we don't know...you know, the way they're numbered, we don't know where that is in the building.
Gotcha.
And she didn't...and we did two mailings. So the first mailing was the administrative use permit mailing, and that's when she contacted us, but she didn't contact us on this mailing, correct?
No.
Yeah, so we haven't had any contact with her from that point in time. So I apologize, we don't know the answer to that.
No, I mean, I get that, because that area, you also have the theater, so it's a lot of public, you know, come and going around.
Her apartment number is 1405. I don't know what they make of that unless they...it could be the fourth floor. I don't know, based on the 14.
Could be.
Could be. I don't know. Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public testimony portion and call forward the applicant, Mr. Sandeep Kumar. Sandeep Kumar, ah, here. Come forward, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, sure can. Go ahead and tell us about your operation over there.
Thank you so much for letting me...giving me an opportunity to discuss or talk it out about my business. So Bergerime is more of a casual dining restaurant. We serve mainly the different kind of burgers, and we do serve...it's optional to serve alcohol for the restaurant, for the franchise to allow us to start the operation, but depending on the location, what we have, we prefer to serve the alcohol to give us more opportunity to gain more business. So that is why we requested the administrative use permit. I live in Azusa. That is my primary residence. The reason I choose West Covina is like...this particular location is like mixed use. There are so many other restaurants in the areas as well, so...and the owner of the Colony, they are preferring to rent the entire 40,000 lot to the more restaurant to make the dining area for the community. So it would be better for me to take the opportunity to serve the alcohol at my location. So that is what I am requesting to apply for the administrative use permit. We are so close to open now. We are almost finished with the construction, so in a couple of weeks, we will open. So if we can open with the beer, that would be really helpful. So if we can...if I can request and receive the approval, that would help me start my business on time.
Very good. Any questions of the applicant? I have a question for you. These hours, like till 10 or till 11, is that...would you want to go...is it till 10?
It's on weekdays, it's till 9:00 p.m., and on Friday and Saturday, we will close at 10:00. And in my lease agreement, we do request it just in case if we need to open, like Super Bowl weekend or something, we may request additional processing to receive longer hours, depending on how we go, because right now we don't have any neighbors in my premise as well.
Yeah, yeah. Because I was just wondering on, you know, Friday and Saturday, if you'd want to go till, you know, add another hour, or, you know, or go to 11 or 12.
Thank you for the suggestion, depending on how we receive the demand from the...
So let me try to educate a little bit here. So what the chairman is suggesting is that he's willing to consider giving you approval to go later. He's not telling you when to open. You would have the ability, the capacity to go if you wanted to. So that's what he's suggesting, and I don't know if you have a timeframe in mind, but that probably would be the next conversation. What would you be comfortable with?
What time do you shut down the restaurant?
9:00 p.m. is...we will close to the...for the guests.
9:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Kitchen closed?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's Sunday through...that's for discussion, actually, right? I mean, yeah, yeah. So let's...we can talk about that during discussion and go from there. Any other...any question? Yes, Commissioner Hockes.
I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly that this is a franchise business?
Yes, sir.
And you're the franchisee of this?
Yes.
In this case?
There are total of around 300 franchises nationwide, and around 180 or so are open, and 100 or so franchises are in construction phase.
I ask this question for use in a later deal. What type of entertainment do you have, if any? None?
No specific entertainment.
Music playing?
Yeah, we have a social media wall that we are planning to put it on, just for the advertisement purpose, but nothing entertainment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if you have open mic night, Commissioner Holtz can come down there and tell jokes for you.[711.13][711.13](Laughter). He's not very funny, so I wouldn't do it. Any other questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, everyone.
I will call up Mitesh.
Hello. I'm his partner as also on operations. I will be operating the business. So as he was saying, music-wise, we will definitely have like some karaoke or something like that, you know? Maybe come down and sing with us.[752.51][752.51](Laughter). Personally, I've been in...working with the restaurant Bergerime. Previously, I opened one in Santa Cruz as well, so I have a little bit of knowledge of the burger business. Our particular area, I think on Glendora, right there, has a lot of bars that are open later than our hours, so I think that our place will be okay as far as noise and all that. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Are you...are you going to be the day-to-day guy there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know what? Tell me about the menu a little bit, you know?
Well, there's a pretty wide menu. You could have pineapples on your burger, you could have fried eggs, you could have all sorts of things. You can make it to the way you want it.
And the samples are where? Did you bring them?
For you guys when we open.[804.11][804.11](Laughter).
All right.
Any questions for Mitesh while he's at the mic? No? All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, those are the only two cards I have. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? No? Wow. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and we'll move to commission discussion, if there's any, or a motion, or whatever the commission wants to do. Who would like to go first on this?
I just have a question.
Commissioner Holtz, yes.
Yeah, the reason I asked that question before, they're going to close the kitchen down at 9:00, but they're going to be open to 11:00. And I guess the only entertainment they're going to have is karaoke, is that right?
Well, no, 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 no.
They're open till 10:00.
They're open till...
On weekends.
10:00 on the weekends, right?
So the staff report on the first page, it says that Sunday through Thursday, they're open 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Yes.
And then 10:00 p.m.
And then Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yes, and my understanding is, my guess would be the kitchen would be open, their business hours. They're not going to close the kitchen at 9:00 o'clock. They're going to keep it...
That's what you just said.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't. They'll close it...when the restaurant closes, the kitchen closes. Come on back, come on back up. Let's get this nailed down.
I ask them what time the kitchen closed.
9:00 o'clock, that would be during the...
He's saying 10:00 o'clock.
Down the weekends.
It's for the weekdays, Sunday through Thursday, we will close the kitchen, and you are...and you guys write the Sunday...sorry, Saturday and Friday and Saturday, those are the two days we will have the kitchen open till 10:00 p.m.
Yes.
Yes.
As long as the doors are open, the kitchen's open, correct?
Yeah, we have to accept the order until the doors are open.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So that clears that. Is there any...let's talk a little bit about the hours...
Do you have any other questions?
Oh, any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
So if you're going to close...if you're going to close at 10:00 on the weekends, and is that...is that what you want, or is your agreement with the Lakes, the Colony?
No, that is...
Is that what time they want you to close?
No, Colony is okay to...they are flexible on the hours, but the Bergerime franchise, they have so many other locations, and that is the standard location.
Okay.
Depending on the area evaluation, they recommend...they recommended us to close at 10:00 p.m. So it's franchisor recommendation, and we accepted the recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My only...as the director said, and the reason I bring this up is, again, not to dictate his hours, but to give him the opportunity, if we approve it, you know, with a longer spread, then he's good to go at that point, if they so choose, or if business warrants it. So that's the only thing I'm saying, is I would like to at least, you know, at least from our standpoint, approve hours a little later, and then he can deal with it as he goes forward.
Do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, we have a...we need a resolution.
Yeah, the resolution number is 20-6024.
Okay. I will go ahead and move the item for approval, and I would ask that the hours on the weekends would be increased to...by one hour.
Okay. So 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.?
11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on...was it Friday and Saturday?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday. Okay.
Well, I'd like to...yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend that further, to also add an hour for the weekday hours from 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
That way they have a much...an option there as well.
Okay, I'm good with that. Okay, so who seconded it? You seconded it?
I'll second it.
You seconded it, and you accept the amendment to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to...what was the number again?
20-6024.
Okay, as amended, okay? All right. Let's have a roll call.
All right. Commissioner Holtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. This action is final unless appealed to the city council within 10 days, and good luck. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming to West Covina with your business, and we hope that your opening up there is the starting point to get that whole retail component going. And we're looking forward to enjoying your menu. So thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a comment if I could.
Yes.
You know, people that moved into that facility knew from the get-go that they were going to do retail, restaurants, whatever it was down below. That was the whole plan. So anybody that moves in there should be aware, like this lady, I don't know where she lives, but if she's right behind the place or right above it, she should know that so she could go to get something else. But they know that going in there, so I don't see how they have a legitimate complaint. Thank you.
Right. And you know what? I'm glad you brought that up, just to piggyback a little bit on that. When we, you know, debated and came up with what we wanted in that area, in the downtown plan, this is exactly what we had in mind with the Colony and with the first floor, you know, component to it, was to have a destination, a go-to place, that's kind of been lacking in West Covina, where you can go relax, have a nice meal, have a drink, and enjoy yourselves out and about. So this is...this is what the purpose of that whole area is. So again, we thank you for starting it, okay? Thank you. All right. We are at item number three.
I want to thank Eileen for a great presentation.
Yes, thank you, Eileen. That's your first one, right?
Yeah.
Very good. You did a good job. Thank you.
I would like to do them all.
Yeah. All right, next, we have a non-hearing item. This is a subcommittee for design review, number 19-75, a categorical exemption. The applicant...I should have asked your name too before I went to...
Tran.
Not?
Yeah.
Tran.
My husband.
Okay. At 184 North Willow Avenue, the request, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing house and garage and to construct a new 2,218-square-foot single-story house and a 428-square-foot detached garage. Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting that report?
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and also members of the public. The item in front of you is a proposal to demolish an existing 1,200-square-foot house and to construct a new 2,218-square-foot single-story house. The existing house is located...all the way...all the way at the rear of the property, approximately 100, I believe approximately 140 feet away from the front property line. The new house will be constructed...is proposed to be constructed towards the front portion of the property, and is compliant with a 25-foot front yard setback. The proposed house in itself is a compliant house, and the reason why it needed review is for subcommittee design review, because it is a new house, and any construction of a new house is visible from the street. The elevation to the side is of the front of the property. The subcommittee design review did meet on January 14, 2020, and they did review this particular application. And what...and basically, the design review subcommittee members are Commissioner Hing and also Commissioner Hockes. During the meeting, Commissioner Hing did not have any concerns regarding the way the house is designed. Commissioner Hockes had some concerns because the front of the house faces the interior side along this area rather than facing towards the street. The subcommittee did motion to provide the applicant...to provide the applicant the option of either redesigning the house so that the front entry faces the street, or to bring it to the Planning Commission for review. When staff contacted the applicant, the applicant stated that they purposely designed the house so that the front entry does not face the street because of their Feng Shui and cultural beliefs. And they were not initially told that they could not have this design, and staff does support this thought because the front entry porch location and also the front door location is not identified in the single-story design guidelines as being recommended to face the street rather than facing any other direction. An alternative option to approving the proposed design is to extend the front porch so that a port...to wrap around in the front as well. Without a complete redesign, that would mean pushing the house back a few feet and also redesigning the front porch so that it's a shed roof, a flat shed roof, rather than a gable roof. Otherwise, if the Planning Commission makes a determination that the Planning Commission would not accept a flat roof, the complete...the house would have to be completely redesigned in order to face...in order to have a wraparound front porch with the front door facing to the interior side. Staff did survey 31 properties on...within the same block from intersection to intersection on Willow Avenue. Out of the 31 properties in the neighborhood, five properties have front entry doors that face the interior side. These properties are...this is a subject lot. These properties are marked on the aerial with blue stars. This property right along here, this property here, this property, and I think two more houses down on the street from where this star is located, and also this property right here, have...also have homes with front...with the front door facing the interior side. And in addition to that, the property directly across the street is the Water Company, Suburban Water Company Yard. So it's, in staff's opinion, the...the location of the proposed front porch, given the survey of the neighborhood and also the development across the street. Staff does not have any concerns with the location of the front porch being incompatible with the given area and also the neighborhood. With the staff as recommending that the Planning Commission approve the proposed house as designed, again, alternatively, the Planning Commission could condition that the porch be extended to the front elevation and walkways access the front porch from the front yard. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thank you, Joanne. Just so I understand, the...is...would the proper term be that the code is silent on this, on that interior door?
Yes, there isn't anything in the zoning code that states that the front entrance has to face the street, and the commission did adopt design guidelines, and it's also silent in the design guidelines as well.
Okay, but with the design of a new...of a new house, we are suggesting that they don't do that? Is that right? Or did I misread that?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Let me restate what we're suggesting. We're suggesting that it meets...it complies with the design guidelines as proposed.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Hing?
I'm sorry, so the lot across the street, directly across the street, what is that again?
It's the Suburban Water Company Yard. They park their vehicles there, and there's like a little office in there.
It was. It's been yours since I was on.
Any other...any other questions for staff? Oh, let me...I'll go ahead and call Teresa.
Yeah.
Tran Dow, you want to come forward, please? And talk to us a little bit about the project there?
So the reason I actually want to move, I didn't want to rebuild the whole unit, but then because my dad, he didn't want to move. And the house is built in the 1930s, so it's pretty old and kind of sagging right now. So that's the whole point of building a new unit, so the whole family can live together in the same city that we've been...lived here since 1995. At the beginning, we designed, we want to face the door to the front, but then when we talked with one of my dad's friends, he studied Feng Shui. He said that the door open to the front is not good for my husband's health. So he suggested to do it either to the left side or to the back. But of course, I would never do the entrance to the back, so that's why the sideways is the best solution for us. And also, our gate is automatic. We don't have a side door for a walk. So in order to go through the house, you have to usually use a... So in order to go through the house, you have to usually use a more control to open the gate and then park. Our garage is on the back too, because we build a new garage on the back, so you have to go to the back. So there's no point of going to the front and getting the house, even for guests as well. So I feel like the entrance to the side doesn't affect, I know the resale value later on, you know, if we decide to sell, it's going to be lower, but it's affecting our Feng Shui, so I don't want to, I don't want to touch anything on that. And I'm willing to show you the house, how they put on Feng Shui, whatever graph you call it.
Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, you talked about the garage, going in the garage and then going to the side. Don't you have a back door?
We have a back door, but if I'm talking about, let's say, guests that coming in, right? Usually they would go to the front door, we wouldn't open to the back to go through the kitchen.
No, I'm not talking about guests, I'm talking about when you use it yourself.
Oh, yeah, of course, we would do it probably on the back or probably if the front door would be better.
Could you explain what health issues your dad has that, if you had it faced the other way?
No, no, this is for the health of my husband.
If I can help out a little bit, it's a philosophy of how to arrange things so that you have a better health or better welfare.
Oh, so it's a philosophy, okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Did you want to add anything else?
No, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you, thank you so much. That's the only card I have. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this? Nope? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Nope? Okay, let's, you know what, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Hakes as far as your concerns. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I've been waiting for this moment because I think it does take a little bit of clarification in that when it, what my concern is, and I think our applicant just acknowledged something here, is that in recognizing that when it comes time to sell the property, that it may actually, you know, impact the value of the property to have a side entrance. I think it's really incumbent on us to look at, you know, how we, you know, look at every new house and housing development so that it does have the highest quality, higher resale value and the, you know, the best aesthetic appearance on the neighborhood. Any opportunity we have like this to enhance the aesthetic of the neighborhood is, you know, we have that charge to be able to do that. So, I guess my real concern really isn't so much the side entrance, it is the front elevation appearance. And so, as designed now, the front elevation appearance is you are looking at the side of a house. It doesn't have the appearance of what you would normally expect and I think most people would like to see, you know, facing the street. So now, having heard that there are, may be an option to come up with a, an architectural treatment that would, you know, create a better aesthetic on that side of the house facing the street, I think we'd like to see, I would like to see that. I don't really have an objection to the side entrance to the house. My issue is the appearance of what's facing the street.
Any other comments? Commissioner Holtz, very active tonight.
I don't see a problem with the side entrance and I don't know how you can say it's going to affect the pricing and all that, and if it does, the only person that's going to be impacted are these people when they sell it. But I don't think that'll have an impact. And to be honest with you, I don't think I'd like my front door across the street from the water company with trucks and all that. So it gives them a little extra privacy if it's on the side, you know? So I really don't have a problem with the way they deliver it. I do agree that we should put some architectural designs on the front to make it look more like a front of a house, we can do that, I'm sure. But not to stop them from what they want to do and their philosophy and everything else. And like I say, I wouldn't want to be directly across the street from the water company either, so that's my feeling.
I think, Don, I think we're in agreement that it's about, it's about an aesthetic that's facing the street. I, you know, if they want to have the side entrance, fine, that's what works on this case. You know, and we may come, may come a time where we might want to revisit design review guidelines for these kind of entrances to houses. This is something that I don't think any survey showing any number of other houses that have a side entrance to the house necessarily conveys an issue of consistency. All those could have their own unique issues, different from this particular one. So I think this is something that, you know, maybe we might want to revisit again in design review guidelines.
Didn't I see some stats up there that in the area, five out of thirty-one houses had side entrance?
Yeah, and I will, you know, let me just make a comment on that too. I went out there today and I parked my car and I walked Willow and I specifically looked at those other locations. And yes, they do have side entrances, but the front of the house looked like the front of a house on those. It's, they're all different, but you know, you're looking at a front, you know, you're looking at a front of a house. There's a little bit of a, you know, a porch that juts out and you've got the door and you go in on the side, but you're looking at the front of a house and you know it. This one, to be honest with you, I agree with Commissioner Hakes, looks like you're looking at the side of a house. And I don't think that's the aesthetic that I want. You know, I want to know if that's the front of a house, it looks like the front of, otherwise it looks like it's just freaking backwards. So, and again, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Hakes that, you know, fine, the side entrance, the interior entrance works, but I think there has to be some type of correction made on the front elevation so it looks like the front of a house. Because I'm not comfortable in approving what's in front of us tonight, I'd like to see an alternative, keeping the side entrance but somehow making the front look like the front.
Well, couldn't we leave that design and all that to the planning staff to come up with something that would be agreeable without having to come back to us? I mean, they've had experience in that.
We could, but I'd be more comfortable taking a look at it myself. Anyone else? Commentary? Commissioner Hang?
Well, regarding, you know, the setback and locations and also what's the surrounding area, I'm okay with the side of the house because each lot is unique and different. So this particular one is unique in the sense that directly in front of it is a plant of water treatment, you know? So, and each lot, like I said, if you move to the hillside or downhill or uphill, it's a little unique. A lot of time, I even see people's house where the backyard is the front of the house because of how the lot is oriented. I myself actually have a house that is, on the side of the house is facing a huge street, so I decided to face my side of, my front house to the side of it. It's just the statistic, when you look at it, how you want it and how you want it positioned. Obviously, you put in a lot of money into this project, you don't want to make it not nice looking, basically. So, and then also, we also give, because of the codes and what have you, we want to give the owner an input of how they want to build the house. And obviously, it's going to be better. So I don't think this should be coming back to the planning commissioners, per se, but maybe go back to the subcommittee with some adjustment to the front of the house to make it better. But not necessarily to change the entrance of where it should be. So that's, that's.
Is that possible, Jeff, that it doesn't even have to come back to the planning commission?
It is, because it's a subcommittee application anyway.
It was originally, yeah.
So the planning commission could, yeah, ask for it to be reviewed by subcommittee, staff. You got three options there. Come back to planning, oh, you have four options.
Yeah.
Prove it.
Right.
Come back to planning commission, come back to staff, come back to subcommittee, any one of those things.
And if it goes back to the subcommittee and we have a one-one again, it'll come back here. So, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm fine for it to go back to the subcommittee and hopefully, you know, you get two votes.
Yeah, I'm fine with it going back to the subcommittee mainly because I think, I think we understand what the issue is and there's not going to be any major changes that we're looking to impose on the applicant to change the floor plan. It's the aesthetic of a side and it's something that should be achievable and it shouldn't be, it's not a drastic change. So it's something that I think they could easily come back to the design review committee and not have to come back, you know, directly to the commission and be settled there.
Let me, do we need to run this by the applicant to see if they want to do that?
Yes, but let me, let me talk a little bit first, just to make sure we're all on the same page of what has to happen here. If you, if you look at the site plan, they have the building right now at twenty-five feet. So pretty much, if they're going to redesign to put a porch on the front, which I think is what you guys are talking about, to maybe not move the door, but at least put a porch on so it looks like the front of the house, they're going to have to move the house back. So it doesn't necessarily mean they have to change the whole, the whole design of the house, but they're at least going to have to slide it back. And they seem, they seem to have room because there's about ten to fifteen feet between the house and the garage, so they seem to have a way to do that. But I just, it's not a simple fix, but it is not real complicated either. But, well, I wanted to make sure that you understood that and I also want to make sure that we were, we were interpreting correctly that what you're talking about is redesigned to allow porch to wrap around to the front elevation. Probably at least around to where that first front window on the right side is.
Yeah, unless the applicant comes up with a different type of facade designed that doesn't require shifting the house back.
Okay.
But gives it that sort of front-looking appearance.
Okay, so either way, you're fine.
Either way.
You know, it seems to me if you put a door in the front on a side there, that would make it look like the front of the house, some kind of a door next to those windows. If that's the side elevation up there.
That's the front elevation.
I mean, the front elevation. If you had some kind of door in that structure somewhere, it would look like the front of the house. I'm just, I'm just making a suggestion, that's all.
So, hold on. Okay, hold on, let me ask a question. So basically, that picture right there in the front of the house, the big window, if you put some type of door or something, that could be looking like front of the house and we should be okay with that?
Well, the door.
Just the look of it.
Could be, yeah, that's an option.
And then you added some more details to the front.
Yeah, clearly, if you think about the way they've designed the entry to the house, the porch is a very important part of that. So you don't just want a door, you want to have some kind of entry element that defines that. We always talk about that when we talk to anybody, you want to define a door. So that's part of this is defining it. I believe, I haven't talked to the applicant, but I believe they're not going to, they prefer to leave the door in a similar location it is now. So that's why we've been trying to work around, figure out a way to design a porch so that it, that's, you know, it looks more welcoming, it looks like it's part of the neighborhood and they want people to visit them and they're not trying to turn their back on the rest of the world. So I think they could do that without putting a front door on there, but I do agree with what's being said here that that would be an option. Let me say one other thing and we can talk a little bit later on this if we'd like, but I do want to iterate, because we haven't said it, so I can't reiterate, but this issue with front doors is something staff is very, we do push that on new developments, Cameron Fifty-Six, Oak Knoll, on Holt, you look at the City Venture project that's on the north side of the Wash on Lark Allen. The projects that we've had come in in the past year, we've told everybody, when you're building residential, you need to face the street, you need to address the street, front doors, everything on it. So we do, we do agree with that concept. Our issue here is that, this is my thing, you know, you don't change rules in the middle of a game. These guys started the game with the design guidelines, we told them at the counter, you follow the design guidelines, you get approval. They followed the design guidelines and they didn't get, that's our concern here. I don't have a problem at all of bringing the guidelines back and working on some language there because I think that's the way to do it. And then, then we, the next time folks like this come in, we can talk to them from the beginning and we could, you know, as I understand, I'm no Feng Shui master, but as I understand it, that there are other ways to address things. And so then you start looking at and trying to massage things to figure out what, how, what works for that philosophy and what might work for our goal of having the house addressing the street. So all that, I wanted to sort of understand, I'm in agreement with both things. I'm in agreement that we probably, to recommend approval of houses it is, but I'm also recommending that we do, I'm surprised we got this far along in the design guidelines without this coming up. Actually, when you brought it up, I thought that, we missed that one. For fifteen years, we've missed that one. But it's a good one to talk about.
Okay. You want to? Well, do we want to talk to the applicant or do you want to take a motion to see where it goes? Okay. Yeah, come on back up. Let's hear from you on this. Now, you've heard what we've said and, you know, what we're kind of, a couple of us have mentioned, what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
So I understand that, you know, the resale value you were talking about and how it's not facing the front, it doesn't look nice. I totally agree with you because let's say later on, knock on wood, if something happened to my dad, I really, maybe I move somewhere else, who knows? I understand the resale value of the house, but the thing is, when you build a home, I am not going to give up within the next five or ten years. I probably live there maybe for the rest of my life and the whole point of building a house is making sure that we comfy, you know, we comfortable and we live the way that we want to live and a happy life. And with the family, I never moved outside of home, so I always been living with my parents and for thirty-five years, I still live with them. So I'm going to live with them, you know, for the rest of their life and maybe there with my sister, just two of us here. Another one is I, you were mentioning about doing a fake door or, you know, something like that. The whole point of having the door to the sideways is to, like you say, the philosophy of Feng Shui to help the health of my husband. Even if the fake door in the front, it probably looked nice, but the thing is like, even with that one, I don't want to take any risks for it. Actually, open to the front is actually helping my wealth a lot, but then it's going to affect his health, so that's why I want to do it to the sideways. So I don't, I'm not for or I don't agree with you to have the door to the front even. I think we do have windows, I think we do have windows to the side.
Do you think you can come up with some kind of design?
I don't know about that, I have to tell my husband, he more creative than I am.
Okay, well, I would like to see what you would like, you know, type of thing on the front.
Because the thing is, this is February already, we really want to start a project in June before the rain season come, you know, to have the roof, everything over, because the longer we're going to wait, our budget's going to be constrained.
Well, the quicker you get it back to us, the quicker we can take action.
Let me ask you, you've lived there for a long time?
Yes, in nineteen ninety-five, since I came to the U.S.
So you've lived there, the entire time you've lived there, that water?
No, I remember when I was, when I lived there, there was a house in the front and belonged to like an old man and I think he passed away, so they knocked down the house and then there was a tree in the, there was a tree in the front too and they cut down that tree, but there was a house there before.
How long has Suburban Water had their facility there, do we know?
Oh, I remember something coming up like fifteen, eighteen years ago and I think, I want to say nineteen ten.
It's a well, yeah.
Yeah, Glenn might have some.
Yeah, yeah.
I grew up around the corner, that was your house, Cindy Matthews lived in that house. I've been to that house, actually, I had a party in that house.
And I have?
So, yeah, I owned the neighborhood well.
Would you remember?
That was, that was in the seventies. Yes, the old man, I can't remember his name, but I know who you're talking about, he lived across the street and Suburban had owned that property since probably the fifties. And they leveled the house, they built that nice wall and you look outside from across the street, it's nice. They have the gate, when the trucks go in, they go in, the gate opens, they go in, they're in the back, you don't see anything. It's not like they park out in the middle of the street. And I'm also in agreement, you know, I don't have a problem with you having your door on the side. I understand that's your culture, but we would like to make something when you look at it, it doesn't look like the side of a house. A porch would be fine. I know putting up a fake door would go against everything that you, that you're trying to accomplish, I understand that. So what we want, or at least I would like, when you look at, you're going by down the street, that it actually looks like a front of a house, not the side of a house.
I like, I like to add a little bit, so you might want to go think about it and see to make it something look like a front.
So you might want to go think about it and see to make it something look like a frontage, so you don't have to redesign it in a way that where the door's in the front, it just have to look like. You can, there are lots of things, architectural details that you can add on to, you might want to think about that, and then send this, after you're done, go to the subcommittee meetings and you might be able to get it approved a lot faster.
So, okay, that part I understand it, but then the more material you add to the house, that means it's more money for us, and we do have a very tight budget, and you're talking about building a brand-new home. So I have taken into consideration of, you know, doing ten feet, because ten feet is better than doing eight feet, resale value is higher later on, but the thing is like, with ten feet, that means you have to put more money, and now you're asking me to put more material on it, that means there's will be more cost to it. So one of the window we have is actually, we gonna do it kind of like, what do you call it, like a flower bed in front of the window, to make it look nicer instead of just blank, you know, just a window by itself. So I don't know if the flower bed around the window would satisfy the meaning.
The thing is, we don't see it, so they can't picture it. So you might want to go back and draw something up, and it might be something simple, it could be a screen, a, a shutter, that is very inexpensive that you can work with. So there's something that you can work with, it's just little details to make the place look a little bit better. It's not that much more, because sometimes there are plastic shutters that you can actually buy and make it look a little bit better, on two sides of the windows or what have you. Just be a little bit creative, and I'm sure if you talk to planning people, they have this on a daily basis, and you can look at the houses and pick something. It's not like we're asking you to move your house back two feet or ten feet, we're not asking for that. I'm just saying that sometimes there are little details that you can buy to put on the sides of the windows, or, you know, these little things that you can do to, 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 to help to make the place look a little bit better. So you might want to go back and talk to the planning people, they may have a lot of pictures of what it looked like, so that they can maybe recommend some details that they can put, or suggest to you, and you pick from one. We're not suggesting that you have a door, we're not suggesting that you move in your house, we're not even entertaining that you do a porch. So what you're saying, that be a little bit creative, just make it look like, more like a frontage, that's all. So you can come up with it, if not, talk to Jeff, if not, call me, I'll help you with this thing, not that bad. So are you trying, are you trying to hear what I'm saying?
No, not that, I just feel like, if it's meeting the design guidelines, I don't see why it's not passing.
It is design guideline, that is true. However, it also gets moved whenever it's meet the design guideline, and it has to do with the frontage. We all, it get all submitted, even if you do a remodel of two-feet sections that we can see from the street, it automatically go to the subcommittee meeting, and that means that the two of us are looking at it. So it's not has to do with the whole house. Let's say your garage, I can see that you're fixing the garage door, you're doing two feet, when I'm driving by, the two feet that's facing the street, that will automatically go to the subcommittee meeting, because you make some changes to the front, the street section that we can see. But if you do something to the back of your house, we're not gonna see it, and it will not go to plan, uh, subcommittee. So the first meeting is subcommittee, the second meeting is the planning. So it depend by what adjustment, yes, you do meet the guideline, but in this situation, it's the frontage that you, that you make changes to. The whole house, because the front got touched and got changed, in, in this, in this instant, it's brand-new. So because it's brand-new, it's automatically goes to subcommittee meeting. And that, that suggestions, whether it gets approved, if it doesn't get approved, then it comes to planning commission. I'm telling you already, and you want it to be, get faster, so we're telling you how to go do it faster. Work with the planning people, and then come up with some changes in the front, and then that, hopefully that gets approved.
Okay, so I just want to get clarification. So if I make some addition, whatever design that you were suggesting, I don't have to go back to the planning committee like today, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So work with them, and then it goes, it will still goes to the subcommittee meeting. So if something that they suggested that worked, hopefully come up with something decent that we liked.
Okay, then I'll talk my husband about it.
Make sure you go to the subcommittee meeting, give input when they're meeting.
Yeah.
You know, be there when they're doing the subcommittee meeting.
Because all of this is really new to me, so I didn't even know there's this kind of meeting that's holding for my plan.
And just to be clear, none of us want you to put that fake door.
No.
Okay, that fake door's off the table, don't worry about the fake door.
Yeah.
Okay, nobody wants a fake door. You know, I mean, no, no fake door. So I think Commissioner, Vice Chair Hing, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's very good, I think you made some excellent points, and, you know, and just, she's, she's right. You know, it, 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 it doesn't take, you're not reinventing the wheel.
No.
You know, you're just making a little aesthetic touch, just to make it look, so it doesn't look like the side of it, and you can do that. And, you know, you can work with the staff and they'll, they'll give you some direction on that. It's not going to be a costly thing, it's just going to be a touch here or there, just to make it look more like a front, you know, aesthetically, aesthetically look like a, like a front of a house. And that's it, that way your door can be where it is, and everybody's happy and healthy, and Feng Shui, you know, rules the day. So that's all you gotta do, and just go to the subcommittee and, you know, hopefully those two will go, yes, that's it, and you're done.
Okay.
All right, good? Any other comments? Do we need a motion to do that?
Need a motion in a second.
Okay.
I'd like to include in the motion that it only has to go to the subcommittee for approval, not to back to the planning commission.
All right, that leads me to a question. What if, what if they're one-to-one?
Yeah, exactly.
They have to agree.
Well, if they're one-to-one, then it has to come to us, what if they're not?
Anyway.
So that, that is- No, but, and, and keep in mind that this doesn't have, I think you guys have been on the planning commission, no, this is a fairly unusual thing.
Yes.
So it's happened, it's happened before and it'll happen again, but I think we'll be able to come to a meeting of minds on this one.
All right, so you have a motion by Holt, second by Kennedy, to go back to the subcommittee.
Continue, continue the item and redesign it to provide aesthetics on the front elevation, and then present it to the subcommittee.
All right, any objection to the motion?
None.
None, five-oh. Thank you very much, and you'll get it, don't worry, it's all good. Okay, so we are moving on to study session, which is code amendment number twenty-dash-zero-one regarding film permit standards. May we have the staff report, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Planning Manager Joanne Burns will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening again. On January twenty-first, twenty-twenty, the city council adopted a resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-zero-five to initiate a code amendment pertaining to film permit standards. The current code states that filming in residential zones is limited to three days, including setup and dismantling, and the hours are, are limited to the timeframe from seven AM to, to nine PM. Filming in non-residential zones are limited to five days of film, including setup and dismantling, and also limited to the timeframe of seven AM to nine PM. Keep in mind that this is for the film, this section is for the film permit section, there is also a section for major motion pictures that states that any filming outside of these code requirements would require a major motion picture type of permit, which would require neighbor notification and possibly a hearing in front of the planning commission. As the, the planning commission can recall, mid-last year, the planning commission reviewed an application for film, filming in a residential zone for greater than three days of filming and greater, and exceeding the timeframe of seven AM to nine PM. This portion of the study session is more of a, I guess, discussion item, so the, the initial discussion, I would like to start off in filming in residential zones. Again, currently filming in residential zones is limited to three days. Staff is recommending not to change, not to change the three days, but to change the language in the code so that the three days not, does not include setup and cleanup, because really, it really takes probably a day and, a day and a half, or a day or two a day and a half to set up, and another day to clean up, so that doesn't really leave much room for filming if filming is limited to three days, including setup and cleanup. So staff is recommending to leave the three days, but state in the language that, that does not include setup and cleanup, that's just strictly filming. Does the planning commission has, have any suggestions regarding this particular section?
Well, I have a, a question, so in the report, consider increasing filming days from three days to five days, not including setup.
Oh, that's-
Is that what you're describing?
Yes, but that, no, but that's in, in non-residential zones, we're in residential zones right now.
Okay, so you're talking about three days filming?
Yes.
Okay, and then a day-
Cleanup.
Cleanup and a day to setup?
Yes.
So it's almost like five days?
Yes.
But three days specifically for the film?
For filming, yes.
In resident, in residential?
In residential.
Okay, all right. Any comment on that, questions?
I just wanted to verify, and I saw it in the report, that they're consecutive days. It's not like they show up one day and don't show up for a couple of days and then come back again, so the three days and the five days are consecutive days, okay.
What's, what's the norm? This thing is stuck. What's the norm on, on, when somebody comes in to film in a residential area? Is it three days, five days, two weeks, a month?
We normally don't get any applications for filming in residential areas, mainly because it's, the, the code is restrictive, and usually, usually the applications that come in for residential filming are, or the questions that we get for residential filming are like student films, which, which this would be acceptable to them, but, but for, for like, for like commercials, really for commercials or, or some, some series, the three days is too little of a timeframe for them, and, and a lot of times, they, when their location scout finds a location for, for instance, for a, for a series or a commercial, they need, they, they don't really have time to go to the planning commission for, for review and approval, but it's, it's a little bit different for a movie and, and like a, a Netflix or an HBO, or an HBO show, because those type of shows require more, more filming dates, and they require, they provide us enough time for us to review the application. But so far, the city, within the last year, the city only received, I believe, two, two to three applications for filming, two are for student films, and one was the one that went to the planning commission last time.
Well, do you feel if you, if we pulled some restrictions, we'd have more people to apply?
We've, we have, we have had inquiries from a, a few series that were interested in filming, but they felt that the three days was too restrictive, and they decided to not submit an application.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Holt.
Yeah, who decides where? Who decides where they can do it? In other words, let's say it's non-residential, I, I can't see us blocking main streets or anything for let them do that, but is there some, somewhere that we have where they can, or is that the planning department's call?
Whenever, whenever there's an application for filming, they have to describe exactly what they're proposing, where they're going to be filming, and they would have to submit a site plan. Staff does route the application to the fire department, the, the police department, and also engineering, and get, well, we get feed, feedback from all the, the three other departments that I've mentioned, and if there's, and if there is any issue, like if they need, if they're gonna be filming in the public right-of-way, they're gonna need an encroachment permit, and they're gonna also need police assistance, so that the police department would condition it to say that they need this many police officers present at all times, so that everything would be safe.
So whose final call, is it planning department or?
The planning department would provide the approval letter with conditions provided by the other departments.
By the other department.
But if, if the other department had any concerns and, and didn't want, and felt like there was no safer way to do the filming, we would, we would not go, go over their heads and approve an application.
Yeah, I, I think technically, if you think about that, the, the, the decision's gonna come from the city manager's office.
Yeah.
Because none of, the departments don't rule one another, you don't, can't overrule, so, and, and in one sense-
That's what I was looking for, yeah. Somebody's gotta have the final say.
Yeah, in one sense, anybody that's filming anywhere needs to get the property owner's approval. Well, the property owner for the, the right-of-way is, is the city, which is under the city manager's responsibility, is probably gonna look to those other departments for advice.
And the other question I have, why, on non-residential, why do we only have it for five days?
We haven't got to that yet, we're just a bullet point number one, so.
Okay, all right.
So is the commission okay with the three days for residential filming, including setup and, not including setup and cleanup, or would the plant, the planning commission propose another day, or a, a different timeframe?
Commissioner Hawke has?
In, in hearing staff's recommendation on there being a limit of three consecutive days, really not including setup and tear-down, the, the setup and tear-down periods are kind of, that leaves that kind of nebulous as to what timeframe that construes, because some of these, some of these setups can be quite elaborate, some can be very simple, so what does that mean? You know, one day in addition to the three, or two days in addition to three, or three days, and then who knows what, what it is? I think we should be more specific about what the number of days are that are inclusive of setup and takedown. So, and so instead, maybe go from three to five, inclusive of setup and takedown of, and, and so that they, they do have a, a set constraint within to work within, not something that is set in between just for filming and that, and the rest of it is who knows what.
So just five days?
I would suggest five.
And they can do with it what they want? They can film-
To include filming, setup, filming, and tear-down.
That's inclusive of the setup.
Okay, any discussion on that? Are we all, I like that idea, actually. Anyone have any other alternatives, or are we good on that?
You can always make exceptions too, it depends on how big the project is. You don't know that till they, they submit the project, I mean, it could be very big or it could be very small, but I think we need to have standards, and then we can, if it makes sense to extend it, we can do it.
Is that possible, Jeff?
Well, let, let me, let me kind of, kind of cover what we're doing in, from the forty-thousand-foot level. In general, I believe this code was written, it was written a long, long time ago, I wasn't here, so he tells a long time ago, Glenn was here, probably, but, I think it was written in the nineties, and there was a film called Good Burger that was filmed, this is a story that I've heard, I wasn't here, and, and evidently there was a lot of backlash against some of the filming that happened there, and so this code amendment was a result of some of the backlash of the, whatever happened to that filming. And so that, it is written tightly because this community wasn't appreciative of whatever happened at the time, or at least the people making the decisions weren't appreciative. So that's the case. Now, flash forward to here, what we have going on here is we have a request from the, I'm sorry, the city council initiated a request, basically to look at the, specifically look at the number of, the, the way filming is done in non-residential areas, but we wanted to hit some things that we knew were an issue. So I would suggest, and we're also maybe looking at some other ways to do things with filming, so we may be talking about that again in the next year. I would suggest not trying to change the whole thing, I would suggest to look at, these things are specific things that Joanne has dealt with over the past year, that we know that there's an issue with, there may be, there, you know, the bigger question that we'd have to wrestle with is how much do we want to encourage filming or not encourage filming? If you think about, that's a big question, that's not an easy question. You might first of all think, no, we want to have filming as much as we can, well, okay, so now they're filming across the street from your house at midnight- the street from your house at midnight, you know, they got the lights on and, and music blaring and, and, and you don't have any choice because you, you wrote the code too loosely. So that, that takes a lot of forethought. I, I, I wouldn't knee-jerk react to any of that, but I want to, I would suggest staying focused on the things that we're bringing up here because these are things we know there are issues with, with the present thing, without changing whether, you know, too much whether it's conservative or liberal in the way that the thing's written. Understand it is written conservatively. There's no question about that. Hopefully that maybe helps the conversation. So I think we were at, the first bullet point, we're, we're good with five days, including setup and tear down.
Are we good on that?
Yeah, and I'd like to stay with that recommendation.
I'd like to stay with the recommendation of five days, including setup and tear down.
We got that noted.
Okay, we're good. Alright.
Um, as far as modifying the timeframe, the current timeframe allowed is seven AM to nine PM. Um, staff is not recommending any changes. Is the planning commission okay with the current timeframe? That's Monday, Monday through, um, Sunday through, um, Saturday.
Again, residential zones only.
In residential zones. This is only for residential zones.
Right, okay.
Right now.
Is everyone comfortable with that? Yeah? Okay.
That's what, just so you understand, if they go over that, they still have the ability to go through the major film permit. That's what happened with the one you guys-
The one we approved during this, with, uh, Justine Bateman, that was a major film permit.
And it was passed in nine years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. So then it would just up, it would go up a notch as far as still possible? Okay. Alright. What's next?
Um, non-residential zones.
Ah.
So in the non-residential zones, filming is limited to five days. That, that's including cleanup and setup. Um, and in addition to that, they can only film, um, five days within a three-month period. So if you film for five days, you can't film until another three months from the time you first filmed. Um, in, um, sta-, um, in this portion, staff, um, provided, um, four different options. One is to make no changes. Um, two is to allow filming up to ten times in a calendar year with, with, uh, minimum fourteen days in between filming. Um, three, allow thirty days of filming in a calendar year with a minimum of fourteen days in between filming. And then four is to eliminate number of times and require fourteen days in, in between filming. So just, um, just to clarify that, the, the, um, where we got the fourteen days from, the fourteen days, we, we basically looked at the temporary use permit section in the code that we already have. And in the temporary use permit section, um, there's a portion where, um, if, if somebody's applying for temporary use permit, they can only, they can have an event, but it has to be, um, you, you, but you can't have another event until fourteen days after the first event. Um, and that's also where we got the thirty days from as well because in the temporary use permit section, some larger commercial properties are limited to thirty days in a calendar year. So, um, in this section, staff is recommending to allow filming up to ten times in a calendar year with four, um, fourteen, um, minimum days in between filming. So the ten times is basically, um, we didn't identify, we, we're not identifying a number of days. Basically, it's per application. Um, if we received an application to film one, um, movie or one, one commercial, um, it would be for the duration of the filming of that specific, um, commercial or movie or, um, film. Uh, and then they would not be able to have another film date until fourteen days after that. Um, staff does have some concerns regarding, um, allowing an unlimited or high number of filming days in non-residential zones because this may discourage the filling of vacant tenant spaces in commercial areas, which is not consistent with the city's general plan policy of maintaining and enhancing the city's ta- current tax base. Um, and, and also in some instances, this al-, this could also encourage the operation of a film studio on vacant properties or vacant buildings, which is also not, which is not a permitted use that's identified in the city's land use matrix anywhere within the city of West Covina. So these are, um, these are the staff's rec-, um, options that we, we took, we looked at, and this is staff's recommendation. If the planning commission has any other ideas or suggestions, or if the planning commission is okay with any one of these recommendations.
Um, question?
Go ahead.
Uh, I want to make sure I understand. Are you talking about the same company?
The same-
In other words, when you say allow filming up to ten times a year, for each company?
The same company, well, the same, yes, the same company, the same motion picture, basically.
Okay, so it's the same company. Yeah, and, and I got a little problem with having a number of times required, fourteen days in between. I don't want to scare people away. I don't want to make it too stringent that people look at this, say, to hell with it, you know? It's too stringent. Uh, why do we care if it's fourteen days in between? What, what does that do? Give us a breather?
Well, what it does is it, 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 so any kind of temporary use permit, film permit is meant to be on an existing business. So that's the reason we brought up the land use matrix. The land use matrix tells you what kind of businesses you can have. So I think, um, the motion picture studio or whatever, it's in the matrix. It's just a conditionally permitted use, right?
I, I didn't see it in the matrix.
It's not in there at all. So, in other words, if we don't have any restrictions, we may convert a building into a, a motion, a movie studio with, when we don't even allow that as a, as somebody who wants to come in and open a movie studio. It's, so it, it temporary, we don't, we don't, the reason we have limits on temporary uses, and this, to me, it's the same concept, is that it's supposed to be accessory incidental to the businesses there. It's not supposed to be the business. It's supposed to be the caboose, not, not the train, you know, not the engine. So, uh, that, that's why we, that's why we're suggesting what, what we're suggesting. Now, you know, we have these options and, you know, it's up to the plan, and, and there's other options, obviously. These are just the ones we formulated. We're, we're willing to follow whatever direction the planning commission provides and we would, uh, prepare an ordinance and bring it back, and then it would end up a council for their discussion.
Well, like I say, it's a, it's a good revenue stream for us. I'm sure we get good money when we do this.
We get better money when we have a business in a, in a-
Yeah.
A tenant space.
But I just, I just don't want to scare people away by having too stringent. And I, I still don't understand why it has to be fourteen days in between. You know, if they've got a schedule they've got to do for, let's say, a couple of commercials, why do we care if it's fourteen days in between?
Uh, he just kind of explained that.
Yeah, I expressed it. You, you may not agree with it, and I appreciate that, but I, I think-
And all, you know, I, I mean, this is non-resident, and I know we do a lot of commercial filming at the, at the Klippinger space over there. How would that affect, uh, or would it affect that?
They would be able to do more filming. Um, and just to clarify, the city, this, the applica-, the film permit application only costs about three thousand dollars. So the city only gets three thousand dollars per application, and that pays for the processing of the application itself. That's it.
Keep in mind, when we, yeah, when we, when we, when we have permits, we, we can only charge what it costs us to provide. We, we can't, we can't put a profit on it. So now, I would say, to be fair, there, there are some spin-off benefits. You know, if they have, if they have twelve people, they, they're probably, they might get gas, they might go to the restaurant, they might go to a store, but it's probably, yeah.
And those, I mean, this isn't our realm, but those, those fees are determined by the city council, are they not?
Those fees are determined by the council based on the cost of providing the service.
Oh, okay, okay. I got you. I got you. And we could entertain a seven-day break. I mean, as a commission, could we not?
There's nothing sacred about fourteen days.
Right, yeah.
Could be twenty-one, it could be seven, it could be ten.
If you're comfortable with a minimum of seven between, I mean, that, that's something that we could discuss or, you know, take action on. I mean, you know-
I understand why we need a break. That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I understand it.
No, I agree. Thirty, thirty days.
You got to turn your mic on, too, Commissioner Holtz. We can hear you.
Anybody there for thirty days, I don't think that'll ever happen.
I, I think there's too many restrictions here. Uh, this is why nobody's done a film in the last thirty years because this, you, I, I, I would, uh, I would open it up and, and be more liberal. And, uh, fourteen days is, I think is ridiculous. Ten times, I think is ridiculous. Uh, this is why nobody's here. Uh, if you made it a little bit more friendly, we would probably, uh, have more people filming here. So I'm, 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 I'm in agreement with Herb to, to, to move it to seven days.
Well, you know, I, I appreciate that. And I understand where staff's coming from, too. You know, I mean, there has to be some kind of, you know, uh, guidelines that we, that, that we go by because we're, we're still a city of residents and businesses, you know? I mean, that's, that's what we are. And I understand that. And I, you know, I mean, since crazy ex-girlfriend, West Covina's on the map, baby. Everybody wants to come here now and film here, even though they filmed here for twenty minutes and went to Sun Valley. But don't worry about that. Uh, but, you know, anyway, this is what we're talking about. This is the discussion. And-
But take, take the one they just said about Klippinger Chevrolet. I could care less if they're there for forty days. They're not disturbing anybody. They're using that facility that's not used by anybody else. Why should we care?
Well, the, the ideal thing would be to get a permanent occupier in there.
I understand.
You know, I mean-
You working on that?
I know. That, that would be the ideal, is to have somebody in there selling cars, you know?
Well, I have to agree with Commissioner Kennedy. Uh, you make it too stringent and I'll go someplace else, you know?
I guess, let me, I'm a little confused here. So for the film industry, can they have a film industry in West Covina permanently? A full-time film studios or whatever? Can they have it here? Because it seems like we're talking about, one, it's more permanent type of business, and this one, we're talking about more temporary. So my question is, can we have a full-time studios? That if someone wants to come in here and said, you know what, I want to open a studio in West Covina? Can they do that? No?
I, I don't think, uh, it's not in our matrix. Now, I, I can say-
So it's not-
After being here twenty years, nobody's ever asked that. So-
Well, is it because of our code, or is it nobody asked?
Well, generally, people don't know what your code is unless, unless they ask. Now, in my understanding, and, and understand, uh, I don't know very much about this, but we have met with some experts in this. I, we just met with some experts in filming today. Their comment was, there's very little feature filming being done in Southern California. Most of the filming that's being done, and, and the LA Times Weekly, I think on Wednesdays or Tuesdays, they put in, Film LA puts in a thing we're filming is going on. If you look at that, you'll see it's a lot of shows. Some of them are Netflix shows, some of them are, uh, regular, um, uh, studio shows from ABC, NBC.
A lot of commercials.
And a lot of commercials.
Yeah.
That's what's mostly being filmed. Um, we were, uh, we were lucky, I guess, in that sense, that we were able to get that, that independent film. Uh, and that may, you know, maybe it'll change things. They, they really liked the house. They didn't choose West Covina. They chose the house that happened to be in West Covina. So that's part of it, too. They're looking for locations for the situation. They're, nobody's out there writing a show or a commercial based, oh, I want to do it in West Covina. Let me write it around West Covina, right? They're writing around something else and they're trying to stick it somewhere. So, um, they did tell us that they, that filming right now is using lots of vacant spaces. They, they asked about Kmart and Sears, and they said that, you know, that there's a mall in someplace in the South Bay that's completely closed, two hundred fifty thousand square feet, and they've used that for filming. You know, I don't think we want that, right? It'd be nice maybe to say, well, we get the film, but if you don't, the choice is to get the mall to close. So I, I'm rambling a little bit here, and I don't know if I'm answering your question, Commissioner Hing, very well, but, um, I, I think that there is, there is a point that, um, that the code was written very conservatively, and that was done on purpose. It's not by accident. At the time, they wanted it to be conservative. They wanted it to be hard to film because there had been some problems. Um, so it is that way. Uh, when the city council initiated, they weren't talking about freeing up, they didn't ask for a study to free up the whole code. They asked for a study on this particular item we're talking about. And so we wanted to bring up some other issues that we knew were kind of issues and that we were trying to, we'd like to fix at the same time without changing the whole way that the thing functions. So we are perfectly willing to listen to, it sounds like there's maybe a, a, maybe not complete agreement on what to do with this one, but we have four, four, um, options there for this idea, and we're willing to, you know, I, I would suggest maybe making a motion and then seeing if there's a, if you've got three votes or more on, on a particular way of wording it, and then we go forward and-
Well-
Still got to get to your council as well.
My suggestion is, and I'll make a motion, is that we go with number two. I mean, we could always come back and, you know what, if we're inundated, or if all of a sudden, you know, every studio says, God, we got to go to West Covina, but yours is too restrictive with your time, we could always revisit. But, you know, I, I would rather, my motion would be to go to ten times in a calendar year, but I would change the minimum of fourteen days to seven in between. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All right.
We can always revisit and come back to talk about this.
Yeah.
There can, uh, the code, as you've seen, code amendments are not all that difficult. We, we could, you know, come back. And, and I, like I said, we, we're meeting with some folks and we, we may be doing a, a, more of a major film permit change, uh, in the not-too-distant future, depending on what council's decision is as we go forward with this thing.
We have a motion and a second. Now we can, like, just a little bit of discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I'm reading number two, and it says, allowing filming up to ten times in a calendar year with a minimum of fourteen days, and you want seven days, okay? But the, number three says allow thirty days of filming in a calendar year with a minimum of fourteen days in between. It doesn't say anything. I think they can come back two times, three times, four times, which I don't think would happen. So we don't have any, how many times a year they can come here.
No, the difference between two and three is, three, you know, they could do it all in one time. They could do thirty days of filming at once. Or they could do thirty-one day filming. They could do fifteen-two days. So that's the difference between the two. In my experience, what they're filming in, in commercial areas is mostly two-
One or two days.
One or two days.
The difference is, how intrusive do we want to be? You know, so, uh-
And you're talking about an individual company?
No, you're talking about the filming at a location. It's like a temporary use permit. So at twenty-five, twenty-one, uh, West Cameron, they can film, with option number two, they'd be able to film ten times a year, but they'd have this, between each time-
At that location.
At that location.
And it could be ten different companies?
No, no. It's times. It's like a-
Same company, ten times.
Okay, alright, that's, I'm getting that. Alright. Oh, it could be the same company. It wouldn't, we don't care about who's filming.
Right.
It's the, it's the filming, uh, episodes.
The production.
At the location, right. And-
I think someone, oh, I think someone had to give up your house or something in order for them to film, correct? This is a, oh, this is a commercial area. So someone, like, a commercial area still needs to, to allow them to film there.
Well, yeah, and they get paid. They get paid handsomely to use their, their property. And, you know, just dealing with, I mean, I, sometimes you just happen to come across a production filming on location. You just see that. And, you know, they all, like, uh, what's his name? Quentin Tarantino with that movie, you know, Once Upon a Time in Hollywood. They completely redid Hollywood Boulevard and turned it into the sixties. The actual street. They took all the original facades, and everything you see in that movie is filmed on Hollywood Boulevard with the way those built businesses and signs looked sixty years ago. And the point being is, when they were done, they put it right back the way they find it. And that's what they do with your house or your business. They restore it to the way they found it. So, you know, that's just all part of the setup and, you know, and, uh, use and all that. Now, this, we are not dealing with, with the permitting process here, right? Because it, it, the, the streamlining of that, is that something the council would deal with?
Yes, correct.
That's not our purview.
Well, no, 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 that's not what they, they didn't, the council initiated to study the, these type of issues.
Okay.
Not, not, not the whole kit and caboodle.
Right. And if they want to do that, that's up to them.
That, yeah, and they may want to do that, but that's not part of this-
Make it easier and faster for permits to go through. That's their call.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hawkes, is the wheels are turning in the Hawkes brain over there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of struggling with what the options, what options to consider here. Um, and in, you know, the, the four that are put before here, um, yeah, I'm, I somewhat favor, um, I do definitely favor, you know, limiting, uh, shortening the, 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 the timeframe between filming periods of going from fourteen to seven days. Um, but I wonder if, uh, we might also increase the number of times that, um, that can be filmed in a calendar year. Ten times, ten times in a year.
A lot of times.
You know, that's, um, you know, it's less than, you know, once a month throughout, throughout a calendar year.
I'm trying to split here.
Fourteen days in between. I'm trying to, trying to like, I'm trying to, this is an algebra, this is an algebra equation of some sort.
Yes.
You know, how often, uh, how imposing is that? Um, you know, and wouldn't, you know, would more times, and this is all for filming at a specific location, you know, the number of times per year, correct? Just want to be clear about that, too.
Yes, yes.
Um, I don't, I don't think that that's, you know, terribly imposing, uh, if the property owner is, is willing to do it. And, uh, nor is it, um, if it were saved for it was twenty times, uh, nor do I really think it's going to, um- it's going to, you know, present an issue with regard to that, you know, use of potential vacant properties, which I don't think is really going to be as much of an issue as we think it is. I think there's a lot of other opportunities for filming that involve commercial areas that don't necessarily have to involve vacant properties.
Do you have a number in mind?
20.
20?
20. 20 times a year.
Let me just say one thing, and that's fine if that's what you guys, the commission wants to do. In many areas in the city of West Covina, commercial properties are very close to residential properties. And also, lots of commercial properties are close to other commercial properties, in other words, and sometimes share sites, and so they're, you know, I, I can't speak to what the imposition is, but I, I would think that most times there is some imposition when that happens. But it may not be a major one, it may be a very minor. But anyway, that, that.
I like to second the motion that Commissioner Reddolt's had, allowing filming up to 10 times with seven days in between.
You seconded it already.
Oh, you seconded it, you did already.
We just spent a discussion for the last. Yeah, and mine's an, and mine's an alternate motion, I suppose we, you know.
It's a, it's an, okay, you're making an alternate motion to 20 days?
Yeah.
20 times.
20 times.
20 times.
In a calendar year.
In a calendar year.
Okay.
With seven days.
Is there a second to the alternate motion? Hearing none?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So you want to do 20 days or 20 times? And seven days in between?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so we'll take that motion.
That's a substitute motion.
Substitute motion. Hakes is motioning 20 times. 20 times?
Yeah, 20 times.
Seven days in between. Kennedy's second.
And if it fails, then we can, you know, take the original motion.
Okay. All right, let's have a roll call vote on, on this alternative motion then, please.
Commissioner Holtz.
No.
Commissioner Hing.
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Aye.
Commissioner Hakes.
Aye.
Chairman Reddoltz.
No.
It passed three to two, the alternative motion.
Work with that, bring that back to, to time of the public hearing.
Okay.
And I think there's one more.
There's one more, to modify, modify the 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM timeframe, the recommendation is 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
I, I have no problem with that at all. I think that makes it more accommodating, and I'm for that. Can you give the report then on that?
The current timeframe for, for filming is from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in non-residential zones, so they can only film between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Staff is recommending to extend, to extend the timeframe instead of, from seven, to start at 7:00 AM to start at 6:00 AM, and then in, and to, and at 11:00 PM instead of 9:00 PM.
In non-residential zones. I, I, from my seat, I don't have a problem with that.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go with staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. Any further discussion? Nope?
Yeah, no discussion.
Yes?
Yeah. Going from nine, you know, now, this actually goes to the point that, you know, Jeff made, that you have a lot of, you know, commercial properties in close proximity to residential properties, and, and going, it seems to me that going from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM is quite a significant shift. I'm personally not too comfortable with that. I think a 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM timeframe is pretty substantial for, for the day. And you can't get your work done between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM in, in, in one day's work. I don't know why it has to be, you know.
You have a, you have a timeframe you'd be more comfortable with?
How about 10?
Maybe, maybe not even changing it, honestly.
Are you comfortable with 10:00 PM?
I'd compromise, yeah.
I, I think closer to West Covina on Grant and Cameron, there's a house over there. I don't think it belonged to, I'm not sure, but they filmed it quite often there, and sometime I think they needed the darkness in order to film light, night, party, shows, what have you. And I think when they moved people in, they have different people coming in at different times, different stages. I mean, the morning, you know, so I think it gave them a little bit flexibility, and our traffic is just crazy. Even though they're not filming, I noticed that I've seen people around even earlier than that due to traffic and where people are traveling from to that area.
Yeah.
And while they're filming, traditionally, it's, it's, it's really packed. It's almost like a commercial area for a few days.
Right.
But then after it's done, you know, but it's throughout the whole day. Different people come in, and then they leave, and then new crews come in. So it's almost like they try to pack as many people, as many filming as much as possible within that.
It's not like it's concurrently all day. There's kind of in and out, there's different, you know, different scenes, different shots, different, you know, things they're trying to get accomplished in that time window.
So even if he said six, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Even if he said 6 o'clock, because I do see people are there prior to that, and I think due to, it depends on where they're coming from, and.
I think 6 to 11 is, is fine. And you remember, they don't have to be there at 6, and they don't have to stay to 11. That just gives them the flexibility. If there's a night shoot, they have the time in there without getting special permits. So I would say for the non-residential, 6 to 11 is fine.
6 to 11, okay.
I, I.
We made a motion, and we had a second on that, right? Did I make a motion? And you seconded it, right, Kennedy? Or was there a second?
I've seconded everything, but.
Good to know. It's good to know, you think about it.
I've got seconditis. I was, I was also going to tell, tell you that filming industry is just different, you know. It's not like us, it's work a normal week. They, they work weird hours, they, they, they're, they're on timeframe, they got to get this done within five days, eight days, whatever, and they have to work till whenever, till, you know, and they have to do the same takes over and over and over and over. I, I've actually been on, on, on the site where they film, and it's, it's quite different. It's actually really, really ridiculous, but they go on and on and on and on. So the 6 to 11 is, that's all non-commercial. So I, you know, 7 to 9 for, for residential. Non-residential, well, same thing, so.
You know, just, just a.
This meeting is taking longer than the askers.
Yeah. Well, there's no host, you know, so. Just a side note, one time I was, I forget where I was, in the valley someplace, San Fernando Valley, and they were shooting, you know, you drive by and you see all the trucks set up and all the lights, and I, "What the heck are they doing here?" And I watched them film a car, you know, with the actor driving. He, it must have been 20, less than 20 seconds. And, you know, the guy just drove up the street, everybody got out of the car, ran into the house. They probably did that 15 or 20 times. And I got to talking to one of the guy, the sound guy or something, and he says, "You know, this is going to be on, on the screen for about four seconds." About four seconds of screen time, and we're doing this for hours. So, you know, that's the film, like Glenn's saying, that's, that's the nature of the business. So we have a motion and a second. Let's go for a roll call.
Okay, so this is on the last bullet point. Commissioner Holtz.
Yes.
Commissioner Hing.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Aye.
Commissioner Hakes.
Aye.
And Chairman Reddoltz.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Okay.
Let's say, "Get it done, folks."
Yeah, we have our information. We will be preparing a code amendment, working with our city attorney to make sure it's all legal, and then bring it back to you for a public hearing.
Now, we are at the point of commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. I have a comment. Well, I just want to remind our vast audience here in the chamber, and the millions of people watching on cable and YouTube, that yes, yes, in two days, Chick-fil-A is opening. On February 13, Chick-fil-A is opening. The ribbon cutting and all that is 9:00 AM. They're going to open the doors to the public at 6:30, and yes, they're allowing people to camp on their premises overnight so they can get in line and get the 100, the first 100 people are going to get a, you know, a chicken combo plate every week for 52 weeks. And I also, jeez, I have to remind, yes, I have to remind the folks, back when we heard this item, and I made a comment, it got in the paper, that don't come complaining to me when you're stuck in a traffic nightmare over there, because, believe me, there's going to be a lot of traffic, and that's good, because that means they're doing well and they're successful. But I'm already seeing comments on social media, "Oh, my God, it's going to be a night."